Twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, the Planning Commission hearing will begin. I'm sorry, what? Just repeat, or, yeah. All right, the Planning Commission hearing for July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three will begin. It's six oh one P M. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Andrew South. Following, we'll have a roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that we are just fans. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its goal.
Okay, we'll start with a roll call and a statement of conflicts. Yes or no on any conflicts of interest, beginning with Commissioner De Soto.
Present, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Okay, we'll read into the agenda, we'll start with items. We'll hear them concurrently, but I'll read in item number one. Ryan McCord requests concept plan approval for approximately one hundred thousand square feet of new warehouse space in a proposed airport industrial zone located at thirty-one fifty-five West Center Street, Provo Bay neighborhood. Item number two, Ryan McCord requests a zone map amendment from the A-one agricultural, A-one-point-one agricultural zone to the airport industrial zone in order to build warehouses on the property at thirty-one fifty-five West Center Street, Provo Bay neighborhood. Our city staff member, Aaron Ardmore, will be presenting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right. So introducing to the request, so the property is here, between Lake Shore Drive and Lakeview Parkway. Again, the request is to rezone it and has a concept plan for some industrial warehouse space there. Just to kind of familiarize yourselves with the property, if you haven't gone by. Currently, there's some agricultural use to the south of the property. And then there's a retail supply for, for ground cover and rocks and things like that on the north end with the current business license there. So these are, these are Google images and there's a couple photos that that staff took of the existing condition of the property. So, like you said in the introduction, the current zone is agricultural and the use has been that way for quite some time. But I think what's important on this zone change request is the general plan, so I'll stay here for a second. This is kind of the very northeast corner of the airport-related designation for the, in the general plan. It's also supplemented by the southwest neighborhood plan on going towards airport-related uses. So, so I think that's an important note to make as the zone complies with that general plan request. It's actually an implementation step of the southwest neighborhoods plan to rezone these areas to airport or airport industrial. Regardless of kind of the concept plan and whether that would change or not, the zoning would, would be kind of satisfying those goals. Speaking of the concept plan here, this, this is what the applicant has put forward as something that could be built on the property. So warehouse spaces is about hundred thousand square feet in what you're seeing right there. You can see the properties to the west. There's a couple residential properties to the west there. They have an interest in participating in the reason at this time. So it would just be this, the subject parcels at the thirty-one fifty-five West Center Street. That's all I really have, we're recommending approval again. Staff feels like this is a good request because it meets the general plan, it meets the southwest neighborhoods plan, it's, it's what everybody's expecting for the area. And we feel like a concept plan as shown could, could be approved there through a project plan if the zone changes approved. So do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioners, if you have any questions.
Aaron, on this concept plan you have showing here now, is that correct? Because isn't there, there are properties on the west, that island, that are not going to be part of it?
Yeah, so, so they're showing, so you could see kind of the hatch area showing what, what they could kind of develop as to make it more seamless as those property owners choose to rezone in the future.
So this is a future look, not, not what we view now.
Right, it's just the hard line that you can see is, is where his concept plan would be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just dumb question, what will these warehouses contain?
Um, it's not known at this time, so that, that would be determined later as, as the project plan kind of gets built out and he finds potential tenants.
Okay.
Yes, but, I guess I'll hold. I noticed they're short on parking just a little bit. Is that anything that's going to be critical? I mean,
Again, it's a concept plan.
Wait and talk to Ryan about it, but
Yeah.
Is this something that's going to be in operation twenty-four seven?
So again, that's unknown.
Coming and going all the time, that kind of stuff, or is this going to be basically a daytime?
Yeah, so, so a lot of times when you see rezones come to you, there's a very specific plan with the concept plan of this is what we're going to build, this is what we're going to do. We've even locked some of those into development agreements. This is just really bringing the zone into compliance with the general plan. This is a concept of what could be built there. Obviously, things may change, potential tenants might, might come into the picture. But at this point, it's, it's very conceptual, we're just kind of more looking at the zone change that for what it could be, yeah.
You said there are details that will need to be fixed or added as the project planned stage.
Right, like you, you noted the parking, this particular concept plan would be short in parking for the amount of warehouse space. There's a triangle to the south there, that's unidentified of what it would be. So, so like I said, it's very conceptual at this point, it's just kind of giving the planning commission, the city council, an idea of what could be built with this zone.
You, you mentioned talking to the property owners to the west, or did, did they voice any, they said they weren't really part of it, but did they voice any oppositions to it?
Um, you could verify this with the applicant, I don't believe they did, they just didn't want to participate in the zone change at this time.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we have anything else, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant, thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Please state your name and organization who you are representing.
My name's Ryan McCord, I'm representing Sunshine Greenhouses, I guess, as the people who own the property, so.
Go ahead, and, and do you have anything to add to the?
No, I think kind of what you guys are talking about, it is a general concept of idea what we're thinking, I think we're pretty, I mean, pending approval, pretty locked into this, this idea. We, our thought process, you know, we're new to this, we're learning this process ourselves and going back, we might do it a little bit differently than we did, but the process of actually going and getting an architect and, you know, paying for that and actually getting the legitimate plans without first us knowing that we could get the zone changed felt like a risk, right? And because I think we got quoted two hundred thousand dollars to get this building designed. And so this, this cost us significantly cheaper to do, right? And so that's kind of the idea is that we, we get the zoning changed and then we have that security and then we go forward from there.
You mean the security of the, the actual zone being changed?
Zone being changed, right? So, yeah.
I had some questions.
Go for it.
They, what, is this going to be like, just the one, I mean, there's four individual buildings, right? Proposed.
Yes.
And will each building be a separate unit that will hold storage? Or is it going to be more like what they're building down by the boones? Where they're each an individual building, basically?
So, so our thoughts are, so it's four individual buildings and we've broken it down into the, each building's going to be about twenty-five thousand square feet is what we're thinking. Inside of that, we're thinking that what the minimum space, like the minimum space somebody would be able to rent is five thousand square feet. So we could potentially have five, five thousand square feet units inside of each building. And so that's, that's, does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, kind of, but will they be required, will it be like a twenty-four seven kind of operation?
I think, I think whatever.
Trucks coming, going at night during the day.
Obviously, you know, obviously that's not ideal. The person who owns part of the property lives right there, right, twenty feet from there. I think that with the airport industrial zoning, I think we need to look at what that entails as far as who would be in there and the needs of the airport inside of those buildings, right? But I, I don't know at this time.
Are you planning on developing this as your business, developing this and operating them, or is it like selling it?
Yeah, so I, we're, I guess in residential be more the apartment kind of, you know, we're looking to own each building and not sell, sell them, yes.
All right, I don't see any other questions by Commissioners, we'll stand, you just stand by and we'll all right, we're going to open this up for is there a representative from the district here? Or the Provo Bay neighborhood? No? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. You'll be limited to two minutes each. The timer will start when you after you state your name and, and where you live. There is laser pointers at the podium. You'll hear a pop beep sound when your time's close to being up. Go ahead, Mr. Ardmore.
I might report, the staff report, as you, as you saw, was written before the, the district met on this item. I was there last Thursday when this item was brought up at the district and there wasn't a lot of concern or there's more questions like you guys had about potential uses. Are, are users, but, but there didn't seem to be any strong opposition to the project.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, go ahead, name and where you live.
Thank you, my name is Sam Ayer. My, I live at four eleven east four hundred north in Springville, Utah, but my wife and I are the owners of Beehive Homes of Provo, which is just across the street on Center Street. And so, and I apologize that we didn't get to participate in the neighborhood meeting, I, I just learned about it later, it was my fault. We're, I, I guess I'm still trying, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we don't know more about what specifically it's going to be. We're concerned about the increased traffic. We're, we're concerned about the noise that might be happening, you know, if it is twenty-four seven or even just during the day. On that, on the intersection of Lake Shore and Center Street, there have been quite a few accidents and some of which have had put vehicles into our, onto our property. And so I do get a little concerned just about the increased traffic there. I, you know, also just being a part of the residential side, I get a little concerned about our, our residents looking outside and just seeing giant warehouses. But I do understand that this is part of the city's plan, I know where we're located, but so if there's anything that can be done to, you know, help with noise and help with traffic. I know there's a concern that the parking might be too small, I kind of think, well, I hope it doesn't have to be a lot more, just just because of the impact that it can have on the, on the people in that residential area. But those would be, you know, my concerns, thank you.
Can, if, if you don't mind me asking, staying up for a little bit, can you tell me a little bit about the nature of the business for Beehive Homes? What, what kind of operations you have, just thirty-second description?
Yeah, so the Beehive, Beehive Homes of Provo is a home for twenty-four elderly residents that are, you know, that need, that's assisted living and memory care. So we have residents there that have physical needs and mental needs. And we have nurses and C N As on site that, that support them.
Thank you.
And we appreciate all the support we get from the city and the blessing that we have to be here, so.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Go ahead. If there's anyone else who would, who would like to say their piece, we, we please encourage you to to speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and we'll we'll discuss each of these as Commissioners, the first one is, this is one that we approve or deny. This is on the concept plan, and then number two, the zone map amendment is a recommendation to city council, so let's just go ahead and discuss.
I see how traffic could be a concern and thinking of big trucks coming across center where there are homes and things and in that closer to this area. And I wonder, I don't know what the mechanism is to do something where the trucks would need to go out south along Lakeview down to the freeway the other way, instead of being, coming in on Center Street. So that's also a very busy accident prone area, but lots of activity.
I'm sorry, when I look at it, I, I see, I mean, there's two entrances, right? One on Center, one on Lake Shore. I imagine the center one would not be used very often if it's a large vehicle. But that, you know, traffic would turn left on the Lake Shore Drive and then meet up with Lakeview Parkway, but I don't know. At some point, some type of traffic control device would be needed at Lakeview Parkway, whether it's a stop sign, a yield or a, a stop light, go ahead.
Center Street is a designated truck route, for one thing. So that's going to be difficult to deal with. And portions of it are state roads, so that's going to be even more difficult for us to have control, I think the state really resists, you know, us making determinations about trying to affect truck traffic on, on roads like that, so.
Thank you.
Um, I'll, I'll share a few thoughts, I yeah, just that this is this property uh, you know, for me, I give a little bit of weight for it being designated as airport compatible in the southwest neighborhood plan in two thousand eighteen and then again in the general plan update. And so I yeah, that's where I'm leaning towards this, I'd, I'd love to hear any other comment by Commissioners.
I feel similarly, this is what we're planning for and this seems to meet, it's a concept plan. And the questions that we have are the questions that are going to have to be dealt with. Appreciate the concern from the Beehive, Beehive House, I mean, those kinds of questions are going to be addressed as they go through the actual project plan and development process, so. It's, yeah, it's what we've, what we're expecting and it looks like what we expect, so.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion? On item number one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that the planning commission approved the concept plan. This is item number one, Ryan McCord's request for concept plan approval, approximately one hundred thousand square feet of new warehouse space in the proposed AI zone located at thirty-one fifty-five West Center Street.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
That's a second by Commissioner Knudsen on the motion by Commissioner South. Again, go ahead and do a roll call on the on approval of item number one, starting with Commissioner De Soto.
I.
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 And I vote aye, the item number one is approved with a vote of six zero. And any motion on item number two?
I'm going to approve the sorry, I have to get action for to forward a positive recommendation to the city council on item number two. Ryan McCord requests a zone map amendment for A-one-point-ten agricultural zone to the AI airport industrial zone. Didn't read the whole thing.
We incorporate it by reference, is there a second on the motion?
I, I'll second that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call, or any discussion on the motion? No?
Yeah, they've seemed pretty wrapped in the same, kind of the same points, I think, apply.
Yeah, I didn't feel that we need to make any amendments on either or, is anyone? Anyone, I didn't see any opposition or anything to that, let's go ahead and do roll call on item number two. Commissioner De Soto.
I.
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 And I vote aye, the item number two is will be recommended to city council for approval. Right, let's turn to item number three, Development Services Requests Ordinance Text Amendments to subsection fourteen-point-three-four-point-two-five-zero subsection eleven, to update standards, standards for the conditional uses for communication towers and antennas. This is a citywide application, our staff member Dustin Wright will be presenting.
Thank you very much. So this is a staff-prepared text amendment that we've put together to help address a couple of items that has come to our attention. The first part of it would be that the proposed changes will help us align with some federal codes relating to the cell towers. And basically looking at ones that when there's a non-substantial change being proposed to those structures that those would be able to be done through a permit review and not have to go through a conditional use permit process. So that would align with the federal codes for those types of, of things, so that would be like adding exist, or adding antennas to existing cellphone towers or co-locating between different companies on existing towers, so those type of things would be part of it. The next part of it would be amendment would also have some language in there to give flexibility to, to the planning commission to be able to better regulate the location on a property of where these are, are located. You know, to make sure we're getting the best possible location based on maybe some specific characteristics of a property. And so there's some conditions listed in the, in the new language there for that to be an option. And then lastly, the amendment provides some, some guidelines for approving these any location changes that come up, whether it's in a meeting or, or after, if there's any type of proposed change that there would be a plan brought back to the planning commission showing the specific location of that tower. And you guys would be able to prove it that way, so just some guidelines and clarifications. So that's really what this amendment's looking to do and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, go ahead Commissioners, if you have any questions.
Yeah, Dustin. In here under finding the facts, it says that the purpose of amendment, amendment is to align the city code with federal laws and provide clarity and flexibility in the code, so the towers are located in the most appropriate locations. How do they decide where the most appropriate location is? Is it based on where it's not going to interfere with the person's vision? Is it most appropriate where they get the best signal? I mean, how do they decide where is the most appropriate place to put it?
Yeah, that's a good question, so in the amendment, it would be on page six, there's some added language into the existing ordinance, there's four conditions that you'd be looking at to help you in making that decision, so we've kind of listed those out. So that there's, you know, visual impacts if those exist, that's one of the items, item number two. You know, visual impacts if those exist. That's one of the items, item number two. Listed there, as well as a few others that we thought might. Might come up and give you guys that flexibility to make sure that. You know, if it needs to be a little bit closer to a residential property than what the code would allow. Gives that flexibility, but still has that. You know, has a new. One and a, one and a quarter, the height of the pole in there has a. You can't go beyond that. So it gives you some flexibility while still. Uh, making sure we're looking at the the safety and anything like that as well with these towers.
Couple of questions. So essentially what this is twofold. Versus if small changes are made to the tower. Essentially, it doesn't have to go through a re a reprocess for a conditional use permit. It essentially can just. Get approved through a different process.
Yeah, and that's aligning with the federal.
For the new federal requirements. The second is. Currently, yeah, and this is the one I'm trying to understand a little bit better is currently. If if there's a ideal location for that. Pole or monopole or structure, there's certain things limiting. The city from putting it too close to residential areas where in some cases that might be the best. Location, and this is allowing us to now do that. Is that how it's working? Or is it more giving this more giving more discretion? To the Planning Commission to sort of dictate where this should go?
Yeah, I think both, you know, so it currently says that the. Um, the setback of the poll would have to be two times its height from a residential property line. And the the proposed language would give you the flexibility to be. One and a quarter times the height of the pole from that residential property. So that if there is, you know, in some circumstance that came up. Um, a better location, you know, so if they came forward with a. Preferred location because of certain criteria in here, then you would have that flexibility to say, okay, that makes sense, and it's still going to be in a good. Uh, safe distance and, you know, that's a better place for it. That's really what that's trying to do there.
Is this? So I understand the trigger of this being the federal. Is it new federal legislation? Or is it?
Yeah, it's something that's kind of come up to our attention. I don't know the timing on it.
But it's we're aware of new legislation, we want to be in compliance with it. Is it also the trigger some of the issues we had with, and remember this commission recently? There was a monopole that was put off the location kind of changed from the original. Way it was presented to the Planning Commission. Is that having anything to do with it? Just. Because I noticed that the language says they need to come back and sort of reapprove the new location.
Yeah, so when things come up that we realize, you know, we want to make some changes to help. Prevent those type of situations like we saw before. That's what this is hopefully. Helping add that clarification, add that flexibility that. We might not have had previously in some of those other cases.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other comment. Thank you. Dustin Wright. This is a citywide application. Which case there isn't necessarily a statewide representative. But I will, if there is any district. Chairs here or neighborhood chairs here, I want to allow them to go first. Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up to public comment. Um, again, please, we'll be limited to two minutes. Please state your name and where you live. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone here in this room wanting to come forward on this matter. We'll go ahead and enclose public comment. And. Discuss among the commissioners. I, I'll go ahead and start. I I like the. I feel it gives a little bit more. I don't want to say deference, but for 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 us to have discretion is the word, I think. With that new paragraph on on. Number six, I think it was. Subsection F. One. C three or CI triple I. Just that we we have the discretion to. To not be. Not necessarily take a. An applicant. You know, take their preferred location, but we'll be able to say no. Uh, based on these criteria, we think there's a better, we we'd want a better location. So I do appreciate that discretion. And then I like the other parts of the language with. With notice for for rehearing if if there are changes made in the meeting. That notice has to be given again to. Involve. Uh, neighborhood property owners. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think obvious, I think I like the changes. I think provides a little, like you said. Discretion, but also. Flexibility under certain circumstances. And for us who is were part of a couple of recent ordeals with these structures, I think this would have solved some of those problems. I I like that.
Okay, I'm not hearing a lot of. Opposition to this is any, does any commissioner want to put forward a motion?
I will.
Commissioner Knudsen.
We forward a positive recommendation for item number, positive recommendation, recommendation to the municipal council. For item number three, Development Service Request Ordinate Text Amendment to Subsection. 11 to update standards for conditional uses for communication towers and antennas as citywide application.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? No? Let's go ahead and roll call and vote. Commissioner De Soto.
I.
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 And I vote I. The. The motion for recommending approval passes six to zero. Uh, moving on to item number four. Morgan Lynch requests project plan approval for a new 306 unit apartment building. In the campus mixed-use zone located at 870 North. 50 East Joaquin Neighborhood. Uh, our staff member Dustin Wright will be presenting again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so here's the applicant's property that they're proposing to combine these. Uh, 12 parcels of land into one that are highlighted here in red. Uh, this is approximately two acres of land that would be. Used for this project. It's located between 50 East and 150 East and 800 North and about 950 North approximately. The zoning here on the property currently is the campus mixed-use zone or the CMU zone. Um, a zone change is not needed for this project to. To go. It's based off of this existing zone. Uh, the properties surrounding this are, majority of them are in the campus mixed-use zone. Uh, this, the general commercial, the CG zone there where Brick Oven. Uh, it's located, and then the public facility zone, BYU's campus right there to the. East of the proposed site. Here's a few. Images of the existing. Property and its, you know, kind of surroundings. There's single-family homes, some duplexes, maybe triplex, and some vacant property. In here. And. Here's some renderings of what's being proposed for this development. It's a six-story structure for apartment. Housing. It's going to have. Multiple levels of parking. For that, these these plans have been to the Design Review Committee and received approval for the architecture design. The proposed use is going to be family occupancy for 306 apartment units. There's 12 two-bedroom, and the rest are studio and one-bedroom units. Access to the parking garage, there'll be two. Uh, one of them is located on 50 East about. Middle of the development there. And also on the other side on 150 East would be the other ingressy grass for the parking garage. Here's the landscaping. Plan for the property. There's, you know, the site's pretty well built out, but there is amenity space. Uh, throughout the, you know, the different levels in the building. There's clubhouse space, exercise rooms, theaters, courtyards. Rooftop deck on the top and other amenity spaces provided throughout the. Structure. And here's kind of an overlay of of the development with the surrounding property. Um, staffs reviewed the plans that have been submitted and find that they meet the requirements for the campus mixed-use. Zone other than for parking. So talk a little bit about the parking on it. Um, there are 468 required parking stalls based off of the. Uh, number of units and bedroom. Types, and they're providing 334 parking spaces currently. And they're asking for a 134. Parking stall reduction. Which is 29% of the required parking. Um, and they're doing a a transportation demand management program, which we call TDM. Which essentially is certain things that they provide and. And those include. Proximity to campus, proximity to transit, additional bicycle amenities. Uh, for shared use vehicles and for electric vehicle charging stations. And so they're requesting that because they're providing those items. That you, as a planning commission, reduce the the parking, the 29%. Of the required parking based off of that, and their their parking justification, which is in your staff report. So due to the fact that the units are going to be family housing, that means that a family or three singles could live in each unit. The parking. Requirement ratios also include visitor parking in those as well. And, you know, based off the surrounding streets of the development, there's very limited parking on street. It's got narrow streets. It's got some sections where there's one hour parking, and so there's not. Much on-street parking surrounding the development. So staff does not recommend reducing it to the 29% that they're asking you to do. Instead, staff would. Recommend that. It's reduced, but only to 10% of what they're. Asking for in their reduction. And so that would be a 10% reduction, but it would be based off of the TDM that they've proposed or proffered for the 29%. So staff is is willing to have it reduced by 10%. With them providing those things that we discussed, but would not recommend the 29% reduction. And I'd be happy to now answer any questions that you might have on this project.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Wright? Uh, I, like, I noticed the the facade showed storefront property is. Trying to see what kind of square footage, if if any, is allotted to. Uh, commercial as part of the.
Yeah, so there, there isn't any commercial being proposed, those units along the ground level. Those are residential units that have. A porch balcony. Feature on there. But yeah, there wouldn't be. Commercial component to it.
Okay. Uh, do you know, I'm, I'm, I can assume, but just to verify, these units are planned to be for rent, not for, not to be sold as condos or anything like that?
That's my understanding. And and the, and the campus mixed-use allows for commercial, Mr. Gonzalez, but it doesn't require that they do that, just has that option, and and they chose to just go with all residential units.
Any other questions for the staff member by commissioners?
And these could be families or three singles. So each unit could have three singles in it.
That's correct.
Is there any way that the city can? Put a stipulation on how many singles can be in a, you know, how many can be occupied by singles versus families?
Um, there's not. That's the. That's the protected and the defined use of a, you know, family occupancy for for us. So. We want to be able to regulate that or reduce it.
All right, I think we'll go ahead and. Thank you for your time, Mr. Wright, and of course, we might bring you up if we have additional additional questions. Um, I want to go ahead and turn the time over to the applicant. You'll have 15 minutes to present. Um, I'd appreciate it. If you. Uh, dedicate a big chunk of that time to to parking issues.
Sure.
Um, I I under, we have multiple. Letters that were received from the public where parking was a primary concern. Um, you have staff recommending a much smaller reduction in parking than what you proposed. So if you could. Really zero in on those issues. I think it'd be helpful to us in. Uh, making a decision. Uh, go ahead, your name and who you represent.
Great. So I'm Morgan Lynch. I own most of the properties except for two on the south end. We brought up the street map. The Brick Oven also is participating in this project, which was actually. Let me take a step back. So I lived in these houses when I was a student at BYU. My son currently, Ethan, who's here, lives in one of the houses right there. So we we know these properties really well. We've. Um, you know, I've been there. My family's been there. The two houses on the far south on 800 North. So those two parcels right right there, those are currently owned by the Brick Oven or the same group that owns and leases the Brick Oven. And they would be participating in the project. So I don't just represent me. The Brick Oven is also involved in in doing this project. And it's it's good because the first time I brought this for approval, we. Had, you know, we didn't have those two parcels as as part of it, and it really, I, the. We're talking down here at the city. They were excited that we were actually cleaning up the whole street. And doing the project all the way down as opposed to kind of leaving two, you know, projects, houses right, right, right on the end that are. You know, older and, you know. Seen, seen, seen long days, like a lot of these properties there, a lot of them, you know, have been there for for quite a while. Uh, we did have it approved back in, you know, 2012 or 2011 to build singles, batching single apartments. We didn't do it. Um, it was a little different design, too. It had parking on the ground level at the time, which was allowed and is not allowed now. Um, and so the way we've done the parking structure is the best we can do to maximize the parking on the entire parcel, which is one full plate of parking underneath. I don't know if you can see that in the. In the designs, and then wrap a parking structure through the middle. So it's hidden essentially with, if you've seen screens, kind of like the ones you see off the freeway. Up, going up where the theater is up in Sandy. So it's, 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 it's hidden, so to speak, but that is. Uh, part of the wrapping parking structure that even gets us to the amount of parking that we have now. So we've literally maximized every corner. Of ground that you can to provide the the parking that we do have. And then, of course, wrapped it up the middle. Creating the 334 parking stalls. Trying to think what else to tell you about. So what's exciting about the project? In terms of its proximity to BYU, I mean, you can't get closer. Obviously, you're 30 feet away from the tents courts. Um, we think that's a huge advantage. Um, we think that's a huge advantage. Um, you're literally the closest you possibly could be to most of BYU campus. So even most of South campuses and as close as we are uh, to the majority of the BYU campus, this is the closest you can get. And uh, you know, beachfront, if you want to call that. The deck you see on the top, we're excited about that. It's actually uh, quite an expensive amenity, especially because we have to use on that particular side, we use uh, steel and concrete. It's expensive, but it's worth it because the deck on the top is a really nice amenity. Uh, you know, I'll have some hot tubs up there. It will have um, very nice community space that overlooks and essentially looks straight onto the BYU property. We're not asking for height variance, we're a foot under. Um, so we've gone, you know, the maximum height you can go. Um, it's essentially a little bit shorter than the practice facility. It's, you know, right, well, would be closer to the uh, s- uh, north end of this project. And the the amenities actually throughout the whole property are are the best you can get. This is a uh, I would say it's a world-class, you know, typical um, nice, as nice as you can get, uh, married housing project. You know, we can't really say married housing anymore. That was, that's the idea. That's what we want. Um, you know, Dustin mentioned, you know, that you can have three singles in here. I guess you can. Uh, we, of course, don't want that. That's not that, um, that's not what we're not looking for here as, you know, landlords and we, we're not selling this building off. We plan to hold it for a long, long time. Forever. Um, we plan to rent it. We are not interested in singles. Yes, with, you know, as you know, we can't necessarily prohibit that. I do think we can actually do a developer agreement, though, and uh, limit the uh, bodies in the, in the in in the actual um, rooms, which we, which we we could do, um, certainly. You know, again, yeah, with the way politics are and just in general, I think we have to be super careful about how we market the property and how we save the type of people we want there and uh, but our intention is to rent this to and provide something that's really missing right now on campus. So I have currently four students enrolled BYU uh, right now. And they're going to get married. I already know what married housing is like. It's a disaster down there. Um, this is right up next to campus. This is way closer than Wyomount and all the other places. This is an ideal property for uh, married students at BYU in particular, and that will be our target market. And we're willing to do and work with the commission on, you know, ways to ensure that happens legally and uh, appropriately. But that's, that is what we designed this property for. I'll stop talking now. I think I don't know if I've addressed any, all your uh, questions, but I'll maybe just take questions at this point.
Commissioners, any questions while we, while we have them?
Oh, um, before I do that, do you, I mean, do you, well, go ahead, ask the questions. I've got a couple.
If you have something more you that would help uh, shed more light, go ahead.
This comes down to, I think, parking, of course. Uh, I think your questions are warranted and and we're going to hear from neighborhood people that we all understand, you know, parking issues here in Provo quite well. Um, one of the things that I'd like to do that we proposed in this that I don't think anyone's ever brought to you, well, let me, let me back up for a second. Um, this project, as you know, is, you know, stops here essentially with you because it's already been zoned for high-density housing. The CMU zone was created after we had our first approval later when I was off doing something else. You know, people came together and said, we want to get students uptight against BYU and out of the Joaquin neighborhoods. So let's create this zone and literally if you look at the zone, the CMU zone follows the edge of campus. This is the first big project that's ever been presented in the CMU zone. And it does exactly what the zone was created for, which is to pull students tight up against BYU. And the reason for that, um, obviously is to, you know, hopefully get them out of the Joaquin neighborhoods, uh, at least a part, you know, i- if possible, and up closer to BYU. And I think that's, you know, that's why the zone was created. It's literally created. If you read the description on there, it says for high density. And so that's why this doesn't have to go to city councils, because it meets the requirements of of the zone. I think when they were doing that, you know, we um, and we'll hear from the neighborhood later, I think the initial, when we did the neighborhood meeting a year ago, thought was, well, this is a lot better than all these batching single apartments that have point seven pipe parking and essentially have four people in there and we're going to, you know, hear more about that later. Um, but the thought, at least what was conveyed to us, well, well, this is better. If you do marrieds and you have one-to-one parking, that's a whole lot better than what we're seeing down here at, you know, the Village and all these other places. And that was what was communicated to us and I think sent to the city at the time. And, you know, of course, we'll hear, hear from the public later, but the idea with what we're doing here, we we don't want to be contributing to parking problems. In fact, I think, you know, we've gone a little bit, uh, thinking a little bit different direction here. Uh, there's a company that we're specifically um, that we will contract with if we can get this project going. It's called Envoy There, and they do car sharing management. I'm not in that business and we would outsource that to somebody. But the actual the the company, what they do is they go into complexes just like this around the country and a lot of metro areas where parking is tight. And they put in vehicles with, you know, sophisticated app and everything and the tenants can use those cars. Essentially, uh, the idea is hopefully, yeah, they're going to have their one car. Hopefully, they use this as their second car. And then you build that program up. It actually can be done profitably at some point, barely. I mean, you're essentially trying to cover your costs and create a another option besides bringing more cars into Provo. And this has been working. There's a project up in Salt Lake uh, that uses it uh, called Liberty Sky. They have Teslas now. I think they started with some Leafs or uh, Bolts, uh, the Chevy Volt, and I think they're now doing uh, Teslas. So this, there is at least someone, one, one or two complexes here in Utah. I think Liberty does it. Uh, Liberty Sky does it and then Citizens West as well. And there's a bunch all across the country now that are doing this and using car sharing. It's really the future, frankly. I mean, it's especially in areas and metro uh, areas or areas where uh, college housing uh, is tight. And certainly, like in a situation here like Provo, so it's, it's, and I think about it, I think about the idea of actually solving the problem to some degree instead of just, you know, kicking the can down the road and saying, well, okay, let's just keep building these massive parking structures and um, because if you build parking structures, then people will bring cars. That's the, that's the flip side of that and we're going to, of course, be discussing this, I'm sure, at length tonight. But uh, the idea was how do we contribute to this and how do we maybe give them an alternative uh, with car sharing? And one thing that I would do that would be different with car sharing as well is that I would include it in the rent. And the reason I'm going to do that is because if they don't pay for it, they won't use it. This is hundred percent clear. Uh, you know, I I assume we'll get into more parking discussion later today, but um, you know, one of the reasons you have a parking problem and then Joaquin, so no one pays for it. Um, and I I understand that's how things work. And so we're going to include car sharing as part of the rent. They pay for it. And I'm going to make them pay for it. And once they pay for it, then they're going to think, well, I got the thing sitting there, maybe I should use it. So I think we can actually reverse the whole thing and get people to think, you know, basically try this out and actually do it because they're paying for it. And so um, we're happy to also include that in our development agreement as well. Um, included rent must include, you know, the the payment for the car sharing program, minimum amount, I think we put in there. Uh, it's like forty or fifty dollars a month, it's substantial. So they're going to have, uh, they're going to want to use it because they're paying, they're going to pay for it. So I think our project ideas, um, let's present something that um, helps gets people up near campus and uh, provides an adequate number of parking with some other alternatives to try to solve the problem there.
I understand the car sharing part. My question um, is related to the the actual parking permits. Is there, is there going to, will those be for sale or are they built into the to the rent?
Well, I was thinking about that on the way over here because um, uh, as I heard from one of the, I don't know if Leo's here tonight, uh, if we're going to hear from, but I talked to him this week. And, you know, he's, he has some very valid concerns. He lives in the Joaquin area. In fact, I think before he did districts, he was the chair before that. And, you know, you have people that uh, live at the Village. Uh, he goes over to the Village at night and says there's, you know, dozens of parking spaces that aren't even being used. Now, how can that be? Everyone complains about all the people that live at the Village. Well, it's because they charge for it.
Right.
And so then they don't want to do that and they park their cars there and then they, you know, walk two, three blocks and they don't want to pay the rent, they don't want to pay the parking fees. So that's happening not just at the Village, that's happening at probably most of the properties in Provo where they charge a lot for parking. I would, so I'm thinking about that on the way over here. I'm more than happy to put in my development agreement that will include the parking in the rent as well. So there's no extra fee. So guess what? You're going to use the parking spot because there there'd literally never be an empty parking space because they're paying for it. Um, frankly, I think you should consider making that a city ordinance, not you, it's by the city council that would. I mean, why would you have all this empty parking out there when people are parking on streets when they should be doing that? It's just, you know, the landlord's trying to make a lot of money on the parking. Um, and I, I mean, I get that. We will have costs, you know, making parking is uh, now up to about thirty five thousand dollars a stall with the concrete. So if you do the math um, on four hundred and forty six stalls, I don't, I think I did it because I was, um, in fact, yeah. Somewhere. It's, it's around fourteen million dollars just in concrete in the parking. The way we have it right now is still over ten million. I think it's like eleven million or something like that, just, just for the concrete structure of parking.
I'm, I'm curious with um, with staff recommending uh, rejecting the twenty nine percent deviation and and instead uh, asking for a ten percent reduction, what uh, what's, what's your plan if if uh, commission members are inclined to lean towards uh, staff's recommendation of ten percent?
Um, I think we would probably continue. I I don't know what else we can do. Honestly, I've been at this for a long time. You know, I had something approved before. We've been working on this, you know, for so long that I think, you know, it's a possibility we just can't do it. I mean, it's it's, this isn't your problem and it's certainly no one's else's problem but mine, um, that, you know, construction costs are what they are. The concrete, I called someone today just to verify, but you know, concrete's at a hundred and ninety dollars a yard here um, in Heber and Park City, I think it's up like two thirty. That's totally crazy. If you don't know concrete prices, that's like, you know, absurd. I mean, it was even in twenty twenty, I think it was like one fifties or something, you know, it's going up really fast. So, you know, that, it's just, there's a certain point where, you know, you just can't build a project because you have to have a certain density to make up for this massive, you know, ten to fourteen million dollar parking lot you're building. And that's just, you know, it's just math. Um, interest rates are high, you know, these are, again, not necessarily your worry, it's mine if this could actually even pencil out and and do it. But there is a point at which, yeah, you just can't do it. And so the houses just stay there. Frankly, this is why you've never seen a project in the CMYU, in the CMU zone. You've never seen one. It's because everyone does the math and it's, you know, you just, it doesn't, it doesn't work, right? And then, you know, you're going to be, you're going to have the same houses you have there and they're going to stay there because nobody can actually do a project like this without probably either a change that comes from Provo on their own, you know, policing and parking enforcement or something new, maybe like car sharing and contractual stuff and things that you do to 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 change the situation. So.
Why is that the case? Like, can you explain that more? Why you said this is why the, you're not seeing the projects in CMU? Is it because of because the parking requirement is roughly, it's not higher in CMU, is it just because the land's more expensive or?
But yes, for sure. There's that and then there's a replacement cost, right? So rents have gone really high. So people are still making income on their properties. If they're going to go demolish a house, the replacement of that house has to, you know, be uh, enough to warrant demolishing the house and rebuilding. And then you look at the rebuilding cost and you're like, oh, I gotta have this much parking now. And I gotta, you know, build a giant parking lot with steel and concrete, which is super expensive, right? So, I mean, I I could predict now you will not see probably another project in CMU probably until, you know, something changes or again, something radical that people, you know, would view as maybe different, like car sharing or something comes and helps the problem. Otherwise, you know, everything's just going to stay the same.
May I ask something?
Yeah.
Was there any consideration to put commercial in the first floor in order to provide the daily needs like it says in the CMU? I have the Joaquin, Joaquin neighborhood plan here printed out. Um, it says the CMU area will allow for residential projects to be mixed with commercial ground floors to provide daily needs and other amenities for students, which seems to me like then you could easily justify way less parking in that case because the whole neighborhood could walk to that.
Yeah, I I, just to reiterate kind of what she's saying, like uh, you might find some commission members more inclined to grant a a larger deviation for TDM if there were uh, daily use commercial.
What, um, like what, what would you be, like a store, um?
Groceries, uh, Joaquin wants a grocery store. It isn't central to the neighborhood, but it's still on this side of the large barrier to Joaquin and Joaquin that is University Avenue. And so, and it's very boxed in.
We did actually have it in one of our previous designs, it was facing um, Eighth North. You have Brick Oven there, so remember Brick Oven's part of this project, so we kind of already have commercial. I mean, there, that's what, you know, the Brick Oven's sitting right next door. It's a, it's a restaurant, so that was kind of probably the thought also behind that. It's like, well, we've got a restaurant right, right there, but I, I mean, like.
I mean, an example of this would be, uh, I don't know if you're familiar, but like in the Salt Lake Gateway District area, um, just north of the Delta Center, there's there's some large apartment complexes and and there's like a Lee's Market in a really, it was a grocery store market, right? Um, scaled down, but it's, it's built in on the first floor of of a massive complex. And I've visited there a few times and I've seen like a steady stream of people going in, but anyway, that is just a thought, that that, that is something that could could uh, influence commissioners decisions.
So we're, um, if you bring up the map, then you obviously want to see that on Fifth North?
Yeah, and I think, I think the part that threw me off, because like on one of the elevations that I I saw the wording aluminum storefront. And so when I saw this, the elevation, I assumed that there was uh, a commercial element on this.
Yeah, what you saw in that um, was the lobby, I think, on uh, one fifty east. So that that was the lobby and mailroom and some of that other stuff was what it looked like, but yeah. Um, I, I mean, I think the only logical space would probably be Fifth North, probably for something like that, this, like a grocery store.
What do you, um?
I mean, to to be candid, um, uh, square footage for retail isn't, is, you know, valuable as it is for residential. So we're trying to basically cover the cost of a massive parking structure. So, um, you know, but yeah, of course, if that's what the commission wants to see, then we have to entertain that.
What I'm saying is that you could, you could reduce parking significantly. I think if you provide a way that people don't have to have a car, like because essentially if you just have apartments, people still have to have a car to get to the grocery store or any other basic things. Um, and so that's why the idea is that that would actually replace not apartments, it would replace parking.
Okay. Yeah, hi.
Commissioner Kendall, did you have?
I, I was just going to say that would, I guess he's already asking for a reduction, so he's just trying to cover the cost for the existing parking spaces that you're, you know, not, not more, but existing according to your plan. So taking away more parking spaces doesn't, I don't think that helps. You'd have to ask for an even bigger reduction.
Um, well, no, I, it would probably help because you wouldn't have, well, I don't, I don't know what the parking requirements are for like a grocery store. Um, one thing that would work, though, probably for that, just, I mean, I don't want to go too crazy here, but, you know, grocery store parking obviously is daytime. And the Brick Oven has a parking lot sitting right there that's, you know, not really made great for overnight parking, but and they have, you have people at the restaurant, but I'm just thinking restaurant, you know, whether hours, what are grocery store hours, I don't know. I mean, like, there's some parking that maybe could be shared a little bit just with the, you know, you're thinking people walking there and you're probably thinking that, but either way, the the parking requirement, I don't know for square foot, for square foot, if it's the same as it would be required for a unit. Maybe it's more, like you're, you're thinking it'd be more, is that the problem?
I think what she was saying is you could have even less parking, like you'd be taking away parking structures, parking spots by putting a grocery store in there, right? Is that what you're saying? So he would provide even less parking. Right?
I mean, I'm thinking functionally, I'm not saying, I think the staff can tell us about code and all that. And I think this is something that needs to be addressed in code generally. So maybe this is not a discussion for right now, but definitely is something to think about, that adding just residential with no other amenities that dense is just needing, you're going to need parking, just how it is.
I'm, I'm curious, it doesn't sound like you have, but have you had any discussions with Brick Oven about shared parking?
Um, no, I, I mean, I didn't think it was really a, yeah, there's no, I don't think there's anything in the ordinance or anything that you would even allow for that, maybe. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it never really occurred to me to, I mean, we're talking about overnight parking really, and that's not going to be uh, Jake, well, they do have the spots there. Um, I, I can just certainly uh, look at that.
Do you, um, did you have, uh, I, I'm trying, I don't think I didn't miss it, but did you have any engineers provide any traffic studies or parking studies?
Yeah, both, actually. Yeah, both, actually. Yeah, so you should have a traffic impact study and a parking uh TD, the actual TDMs.
Oh, with Hells, I got you.
And um, I should say, it's Joseph from um, uh, Hells Engineering is here. If you have any questions for him, certainly you can call him up here. So Hells Engineering did the report. Hells Engineering actually, so Ryan Hells did the, did your municipal transportation plan, I think, for the Provo City. And he's the one that also um wrote the TDM here recommending our, um, you know, our our parking ask essentially.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I I have just one more. Um, what are you modeling as your rent, monthly rent per unit? Based on the two different unit types?
Yeah, I think it's sixteen hundred, I think, something like that. I mean, well, we have two, we have two bedrooms, we have studios, there are less. So if you look at the the actual, I should probably said this in the in the presentation, but if you look at the way the units are, they're really, they're small, they're they're much like Harmony Square, that big white building right there. I mean, it's modeled after your typical married units, right? They're they're small, there's not. I mean, if you put three people in there, it'd be uncomfortable to begin with, and almost all the units except the two bedrooms. Um, so they're not desirable, especially now everyone wants their own bedroom and bathroom. It's not like attractive to to singles probably anyways. Uh, because they're studios and they're, uh, you know, almost all of them except twelve are studios or one bedrooms, so they're.
So that's that sixteen hundreds for the studio unit, basically?
Um, I, yeah, I don't have my financials.
It's okay.
Yeah, it was like, yeah, it was like fourteen hundred, maybe for a studio and like up to sixteen hundred, I think, for the one bedroom. And that would, uh, you know, and then whether, you know, the car sharing is gonna be included, and that might just put the rent up a little bit more. And then, you know, we, like I said, we could also do in the agreement, you know, we could include parking too, so at least you know the parking is being used and not, you know, people parking down the street and. You know, trying to save fifty bucks, which is what typically happens now.
All right, I I think we're gonna go ahead and let you have a rest.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, we might bring you back up if if there's some additional questions for clarification. Um, before we move on to getting comment from the chairs, um, the district chair or the. Neighborhood chair, I, we have one of our parking officials with us, and I I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but I'm. We have one sitting with us in the front row, and I'm I'm, do you have any additional comments or or light you'd like to share on this project? I I know we have staff's feedback, but um, you're our, you're our parking guru. This is the, um, go, just state your name and title.
Sandy Grishel, Parking Program Manager. I just came in case there was questions or concerns about parking, and so I would be here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Sandy.
Thanks.
Does anyone have any questions for Sandy while while we have her um that might be related? I I have a question. Do you do you are you, do you share the same opinion as uh staff on their ten percent reduction instead of a twenty nine percent reduction?
Looking at the information that I have, yes. Um, Joaquin neighborhood is very congested with parking. And I read some reports for the last six months, so I could actually have it when BYU was in session and during the summer. Just from University Avenue to Seventh East, nine hundred north to Center Street, this area of the city, um, we write thirty five percent of our parking violations here. Which is a big percentage, considering we have other neighborhoods, you know, that we also enforce. And it's mainly in the evenings. The timed parking around Brick Heaven and eight hundred north, it's one hour parking, so we enforce that regularly. It only makes up twenty percent of our violations, which again means our most, a good percentage. I don't, I don't have an exact percentage, but our good percentage are violations written in the afternoons, evenings, and until, you know, midnight. So it's when people are home, home for the night. So again, the information that I have, I do support staff's recommendation.
Okay, I appreciate that, Sandy. Thanks for letting me um include you in in the conversation.
Thank you, Danny.
But.
I have another question for her, actually.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, so this is parking that's on the street and it's permit parking, is that right?
No, we do not have permit parking in the Joaquin neighborhood. It's regular on-street parking and we have timed parking.
Timed parking.
Eight AM to five PM around, just mainly around Brick Heaven.
But it's not metered, it's patrolled?
Correct, correct. It's patrolled with our license plate readers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Uh, any district chairs or neighborhood chairs here that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and open uh the public comment period portion of this meeting. Um, please, you'll you'll be limited to two minutes. Please uh state your name and where you live. I do want to note, we received um. Multiple letters on this, um, some from private individuals, some from nonprofit nonprofit organizations. Well, received some all up until about three o'clock this afternoon, so we have, I think all of us have them, uh, either either mail emailed to us or we read them. The copies received, uh, go ahead, public, um. Make your comments heard. Love to hear from you.
Uh, hello, my name is Scott Hilton. I li- currently live uh in an apartment, in a house near the Provo library. Um, I uh, I'm a, I really think that we should stop giving away lots of parking for free and requiring. Students and people to pay for parking that they may or may not use. Um, it's encouraging people to be car dependent when you already are paying for parking, when it's already free. If parking is really expensive, I don't think that we should be requiring our cities and our and our uh people to be paying for it. On uh, on a uh, without voluntarily making that decision. I think that we should allow le- less parking to be built, and if the market, if that makes it more crowded. That people should pay for reserved parking spots or or deal with the uh congestion. Um, I would also like to mention that I think that self-driving cars will reduce the uh need for parking quite a bit. They may be here in two years, maybe ten years, um, but the uh, the technology will shift toward a lessened parking, parking demand. In the future as driver, as cars will be able to drop you off and then drive away to go park in distant areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
My name is Herb Flint, and I own several rental condos in Provo. One of them is in the Somerset that's right next to this development. I did not plan to talk. I wanted to find out what was going on. I got a postcard. In the mail for this big red development that's pretty incredible. But as a physicist and a software engineer, I would like to point out to the planning commission. That you're being asked to do an order of magnitude larger uh number of people in parking for that a- area and cars. Um, instead of ten cars coming out of there, you're gonna have a hundred cars, and think what that's gonna do to Eighth North. I rent to students for a pretty high rate. They have to have jobs. They have external jobs, not jobs on campus. They need cars. Uh, this, I assume this, that these units will rent for like two thousand dollars or maybe higher, and they're gonna have to have jobs. So you're gonna have a hundred people at eight o'clock, twelve o'clock, and five o'clock getting to their jobs and coming home from their jobs. All trying to funnel into that narrow corridor. Uh, as I said, as a physicist, that scale just blows my mind. That you you're you're gonna create a huge problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flint.
Becky Bogdan, Provo, Utah. I like that this is close to campus. I like that it's walkable, but I think most of us have been to college and we do bring a car and it normally just sits. Um, the concept of having grocery, I like that, but I don't think it'll reduce who brings a car to here. I think it'll just make it be parked. When my husband and I first got married, we had two cars in West Valley City in an apartment complex with a grocery store. Right in our parking lot, we still had two cars. We walked across and did, you know, some grocery shopping, but we still brought two cars. Um, I think it's shown that even if we do charge for parking in the city, kids still do bring cars. They just try to find a free place to park because they are kids, they are college students, they don't have money. And I think if we don't have enough parking, they're just gonna find someplace free to park. And we're just gonna just make the problem worse than it already is. Thanks.
Thank you, um, Ms. Bogdan.
Hi, I'm Carol Long. I used to live in the Joaquin neighborhood. Now I live in the Tim neighborhood. And um, with grocery store, no grocery store, I just wanna say this project looks amazing, and I wish I had that when I was a student. I didn't go to school here, I went to school somewhere else, but. Um, I wanted to share that we are a family of three, my family, and we have always had a car, one car since I've been uh married. And when I was a student, I would bike to three different jobs and school on my bike. And so it's possible, but if something like this existed, my life would have been so much easier because it's right there next to campus. And if there's a lot more biking incentives in this complex, like um sheltered biking amenities and things like that. If you did put something commercial, maybe like a repair shop or a bike shop, a lot of students wouldn't need or want cars because cars are expensive. The maintenance, the gas, it, that's one of the reasons we've always had one car, and in my neighborhood, there's lots of families just like me that are just one car. So if we can, I'm really nervous. I've never spoken at a committee hearing before, a commission hearing before.
You're doing great.
But um, if there's a lot of incentive for biking, taking public transportation, I think that's a reasonable reduction. Um, but that's based on my experience, but even now, I grocery shop for our family of three in my bike. Um, I do, I rent almost all of our errands on a bike, and that's because I chose to be in a neighborhood that was close to amenities. Like the rec center, the library, the grocery store, and here, if you're a student, a married student, you're right next to entertainment, the school. And the, he already said in the plan, there's gonna be like different amenities in there, so if they didn't want to, they could enjoy a lot of those. Communal amenities on the top deck and like those community rooms and exercise rooms you mentioned. I'm like, wow, who would want to leave if you chose to live there? Um, so I, that's my.
Thank you so much. You, we really appreciate your comment. Anyone else? If you've sent a letter, you're welcome to come up too. Uh, a- anyone, really, this is a time for a verbal public comment, and we, it really helps us in our decision-making.
Uh, hello, my name is Chris West. I live here in Provo. I just graduated from BYU um in the spring, so I'm very familiar, and I got married two years ago. So I'm very familiar with the target demographic of this uh proposal. And I want to talk a little about what the current market looks like for uh young married people in Provo, and it's really tight. The way that you get an apartment right now, if you're a student, is you sign up for the Facebook groups that post where the the listings go. And if something shows up, you've gotta be there within a couple of minutes or somebody else is in front of you. That's how tight it is. It's ridiculous. So we need more housing, and three hundred more units on the market would make a huge dent in the market. And then once you get into an apartment, you don't know what your landlord's gonna be like, and you don't really have any choices, so you just take whatever you get. And so landlords can kind of get away with whatever because we don't have any options. And so this would be huge, and I don't think that parking should stand in the way of that. My wife and I, we only have one car. And in our ward, I can only think of one other couple that has more than one. I'm sure there are others, but I can only think of one. It's very common in twenty twenty-three for uh young married families to only have one car. And so I think that that, I think it's one point zero six parking spots per bedroom, something like that, or per unit, and I think that is sufficient for a young married, for young married families. Like, that's how much we use, and with all of the incentives towards biking, that's becoming more popular. That's how I get around. I get around on e-bike, and my wife will use the car to get to things further away, and it works out really well. And with the car sharing thing, we probably wouldn't have needed a car at all if we lived here because we used it very infrequently. We used it to get groceries once a week, like, that's the only reason we had it. It was kind of silly that we had to have a whole car that we used once a week, but. This development sounds awesome, and I really hope that it gets approved. If there's some negotiation about a grocery store, I'm okay with that. Grocery store would be cool. But like, we need all this housing, and we don't need the parking to raise the cost of it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I I do appreciate you coming. I'm out of touch with the younger demographic, so. Whatever stage in life you're in, we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment? Mr. Skabland?
Good evening. I think you last heard from me when I was here talking about eight hundred north, eight twenty north. And if we widen roads, we will induce more driving. If we build more parking, we will encourage more driving. We need to break this vicious cycle. It's not easy. I'm not claiming that it is, um, but. Um, we need to have the the courage to to uh face this problem um and overcome the past. Yeah, the more the more parking we build, the more students uh will bring cars, and the problem will only get worse and worse. Um, we need systemic structural reform. Um, this vote is not uh going to bring that about, but I hope it will send a signal. That um we need to to take uh further steps. Um, I'm really glad that you just heard from two students. Uh, we who are making these decisions were in school. Twenty, thirty years ago, the demographic um that will be living here, young people that I interact with. Uh, at BYU, uh, they are not as attached to the automobile as we are. Um. That's the case for couples, that's the case for singles. Cars are really expensive to maintain. The A A A, hardly, an anti-car organization, estimates that the average cost of car ownership is ten thousand dollars a year. Um, students already have disincentives to not own a car.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I want to make sure everyone who who wanted to say something has a chance to, but please don't hesitate to come up.
Hey, yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit real quick.
Can you state your name and where you live?
My name is Cade Southwick. Um, I actually live in one of the apartments right now. Um, I've heard about this project before, but I've not heard a ton about it. I've I've heard things here and there. Um, but something, I I I personally think it is, it would be a good project, but something interesting. I'm a construction management major. I'm gonna score it now. Um, I have, I'm planning on going to development. Um, and and one of my classes, we had a city planner come. That was talking about Daybreak and how Daybreak, how they were trying to get it where, you know, students and people focus more on walking and the whole community. It's like, you have your, um, right, like here, you have your school nearby. You also have your amenities inside the building, and then you also have a bit availability to be able to walk and go places to get groceries and such. And you're talking about kind of like how with groceries, how having a grocery store, it would help us that we'd be able to eliminate parking because people can walk to the grocery store and they wouldn't need to be able to. Uh, go as far. Um, something that's kind of interesting, I I've seen a lot of apartment complexes now that inside their leasing office, they'll have a separate room that is basically a self-service grocery store. That they'll have essentials like milk, bread, and all the essentials that you need, and like maybe some frozen items and some other things that you can eat if you need to. And so that's an option that like on a weekly basis, people could go and they could buy their essential groceries, and then maybe on a monthly basis, they might take the bus or they might walk. And make it to Smith's or somewhere else where they can get the more detailed stuff they need, but the weekly basis are the essentials, eggs, milk, bread, all of that. They'd be able to get right there in the leasing office and it'd be a self-service thing that they'd be able to use. Um, so I just think with that, with having the walkability and. Um, so I just think with that, with having the walkability and with biking and everything else, I think there are solutions to be able to solve having less parking because like everyone said, and there's studies that say the, you know, the wider the road, the faster cars go, wider road, the more, you know, cars park there and the more parking we have, more parking, more people will come with cars. So I think there are solutions to help solve the problem, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we got one more, maybe? If, if, if anyone else needs to come, wants to come up, please um come forward um just so we can keep it going because I'll you look like you might be the last one, so I might close it after you, but it's, so if there's anyone else, please come forward and have a seat in the front row. Go ahead.
My name is Nelson Davis. I'm, I live in Provo. Um, I think as a, a people in general, we're very optimistic and very hopeful of good things. And I think that's a strength, but I also think it's a, a weakness that we have also. I think we hope that higher density and fewer parking is gonna solve problems. But history has shown that that's been a mistake every time, like it just creates more and more problems, like any of the, the big complexes uh that have been built over the last few years. It, it always ends with a parking problem and it keeps getting worse. And so I, I love this building. It looks great, but the parking is a problem and I don't think uh, I don't think it'll help our parking problem. I think it'll make it worse by bringing more traffic into the area. I, I'm not saying I'm against building something that there. I think it's great. I think it'd be a great improvement. But I think parking is a big issue, especially in that part of town. And so um that, that's, that needs to be addressed. I mean, a new building would be great, but the parking is a problem and it reducing the, the number of stalls is not, in my opinion, it's not a solution to, to anything except getting the building built. So, thank you.
May I ask what neighborhood you live in?
Um, I'm in the, I don't know what neighborhood. I live around View area. And I'm also uh with Aspen Ridge Management. We, we manage a lot of the student housing south of campus and around town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thanks for being ready to come up.
Okay. My name's Hillary Davis. I'm his spouse. So, I didn't wanna get shown up by him. Um, we manage, just I can look at it here. I think this is a great project. It is needed. We manage a lot of properties in Provo. They are old, outdated. And the students that have come up saying they're on the Facebook pages, they're right, we need more housing. We manage the avenues, which is directly across the street. We also manage Amanda Knight Hall and we also manage Old Academy, just a few things that are in the area. Avenue does not charge for parking, but the, and we didn't used to charge for parking at Old Academy. But based on the demand from the students begging us, please charge for parking so that we can guarantee that we have parking at night, we started. Old Academy, we started that maybe six or seven years ago. Amanda Knight Hall started charging from the day they started leasing it, which was three and a half years ago. Um, so while I think it's a great building, I think car sharing is a great idea. I don't know if four cars sharing amongst, if you have married couples in there, you're gonna have six hundred plus people. I am glad to see that most of them are studio and one bedroom because I think the more two-bedroom apartments that you have, the more singles will come and they will share those rooms. Um, it's just, history has told us that. Um, we watch it every day. We work in these neighborhoods every day and we watch the kids fight over parking. And so I don't know what can be done um to resolve that or come to like some kind of compromise that will work for, you know, everyone, but um it probably does need more parking. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else from, from the public coming up, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment portion. And then we'll discuss among ourselves. Um, unless, do, do we even wanna recall anyone up? Does anyone wanna bring? Backup staff planner?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear uh the applicant mentioned that they'd be willing to do something in a development agreement to um try and limit the amount of people in a unit. Is there any truth to being able to do something like that? I mean, I know there's laws discriminating, you can't discriminate, so three singles can be a family. However, is there any workaround in a development agreement?
Typically, development agreements are tied to a zone change and as it was said, this doesn't require a zone change. But we could still do some type of agreement or condition on this that would um address the things that were proffered by the developer. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. I think the things that he offered would be helpful. But we have had other student housing projects that came in and promised things like not renting to more students with cars than they had onsite parking spaces and those kinds of commitments routinely got forgotten the day the project opened. So I think some of these things would be helpful, but I don't think um it's necessarily a silver bullet. Just to correct a couple of things that were said, um, that was represented that this would be the first project built in the CMU zone. That's not correct. Uh, Juliette or Brickyard has been approved by you all just a little bit further to the east. We're waiting for that building permit to come in any time. I don't believe Brickyard had a parking reduction, or if they did, it was nowhere near twenty-nine percent. Tim Towers was built by the stadium, okay? Um, that wasn't previously zoned CMU, but it was a credit union, so it wasn't cheap property. They added zone CMU and then they built a married student housing project and they had full parking. They didn't ask for any parking reduction whatsoever. Um, so Juliette is now coming online or that's about to come in. That's another student housing project in this area. So if pre-zoning property has raised values to where it's discouraging the market from doing what we want, we can always take away that zoning. I don't think that's the case though, because we've pre-zoned downtown, we pre-zoned the ITOD and we've had good success getting apartment buildings in the downtown and TOD areas. So I'm not convinced that putting up the, pre-zoning the property to CMU has thwarted the market, but I'd be happy to take the zoning away. I recommend that to city council if that's messing up the market.
Uh, Director Pepperoni, I have, I have a question about um, when I look at parking, I, I think if if somebody's charging for parking, it's, it's for one of two reasons. One, it's a profit center. Two, because there's not enough parking. And, and therefore you can really, really bank it on the parking permit. Is that, am I missing anything? Is that?
No, I think with many of the projects, the parking is seen as a profit center. I think it does help to wrap the rent into the, the parking into the rent. I think that helps. Because I think there are projects around that charge for parking and they've got empty spaces because the students would rather go find a place on the street.
And, and, and we've discussed that before, I think in, in, I mean, these are public meetings, but in our um study sessions, we've discussed that, that if it's folded into the rent, uh, it, it's, people are more likely to actually use it, right? Rather than a separate line item charge.
Right, right. Okay. I, I don't disagree with some of the things that um BikeWalk Utah put in the letter to you. In fact, I agree with many of those things. But what they want to have happen is completely at odds with Provo's parking plan and scheme and the way parking's been done in city planning for many, many years. Now what they're saying is that's the point, Pepperoni, that's out of date. Stop doing it that way. Um, and I think there's legitimacy to that, but that is a huge issue and problem we have to tackle from a legislative point of view. I don't think by doing one-off parking reductions is getting us where we wanna go because we've surveyed the places that have parking reductions and we're still getting spillover parking. So I don't know what else to do. We've been carefully watching those places that we've given reductions to. Sandy uh reported on this to you in a study session just a few weeks ago.
Yeah. I, I wanna bring up other thing. It's a rhetorical question because I, I kinda already know the answer to it, but but in places that you've seen that are, have been overparked, um, meaning there's lots of extra parking, are you, are you aware of, of businesses where they've leased or rented those out as, as part of um, as parking agreements with other entities? I mean, like the, like the Zions Bank or the Wells Fargo Building or Provo, Provo Mara, any, any places that are overparked that, that they, they're still able to make a profit on those with, with extra unused spaces?
Um, many of the ones like you've referred to, uh, the city has had some ownership in those spaces because we participated in building them, but why don't you go into this?
And one of these on Old Academy on six hundred north, uh, the library, we do, on six hundred north, there's twenty parking stalls there that we do um park share with the library, if you will. So from eight o'clock at night until ten the next morning, we sell permits for students to be able to for sure have a place to park when they come from work. Now I'll tell you, there's twenty, again, twenty permits available. They go fast as soon as they become available. I've already had parents and students calling me wanting to know when they will be available. And we do um sell them per semester. And so again, the city, I mean, you know, the city does um park share like you're asking. And it's very successful.
Thank you. There's a demand for it. Right, okay. Um, yeah, we'll go ahead and, like I said before, we'll close public comment and then just discuss amongst our, amongst ourselves. Does anyone wanna make a few initial comments? I, I could talk, I prefer not to, but um, by all means, please share.
So I love the idea that we have uh more family housing. I mean, I think that concern is widespread. It's been addressed by virtually everybody. We've heard it in meeting after meeting when, when these types of projects come forward. Location is great for it. Um, the, the challenge that I have, I think, on the parking side obviously is uh this idea that we're trying to take one project and make significant deviations from what our planning documents suggest, hoping that that's going to fix our issue. Director Pepperoni spoke to that a little bit about this is a legislative issue that needs to be taken uh i- in whole cloth and not on a piecemeal basis. Um, I, I love some of the innovations that are, that the developer has written into their TDM. I fail to see that as robust though. Uh, you know, less than one percent of the units uh having access to a car, electric vehicles, that doesn't actually reduce the cars. Uh, having a lot more bike racks out there is helpful, but I mean, we have to, we have to somehow get the, the cars from coming or accommodate them. Um, in addition, I, I remembered also, uh, Mr. Peterson, when he brought forth the Brickyard, uh, there was no reduction there. Um, I don't know where that stands. I mean, the market is volatile uh right now. Construction costs are up. Um, but I also noticed that they just demoed all of the, the houses there. So they're, I'm assuming that they're getting ready to do things there and they were able to do that same thing. The, the structures are wrapped around their parking garage, so it's a challenge. It is certainly a challenge. Um, but uh, trying to make concessions, large order concessions on the front end of single projects, hoping to fix that, I think is, that is a big gamble, one that I don't think Provo has seen payoff in our, in our attempts in the past. And so to do that here, uh, that makes me nervous. Um, I, I would be curious and I don't know if we have this data. Um, but do we know like, like vehicle space to bed densities for that area? Do we know what that looks like? Because that area's got lots of old houses and there's uh, you know, lots of cars out there. Do we, do we kind of know what the density is? I don't know. Mr. Wright, you know that or, or Sandy, do you know that?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. It, it could have been something I, I believe we might have surveyed that when we did the Joaquin neighborhood plan. Um, looked at the parking and the uh existing units uh out there. And off the top of my head, I can't recall what those numbers were and that's been a few years back, but that's something we could look into and get those numbers.
I feel like trying to match up some of these against some kind of metric that we can get our hands and our heads wrapped around for these areas would be helpful. Uh, you know, when I got the letters today, I looked at some of the the literature on um the effect of reducing parking densities and uh and the impacts there in terms of numbers of vehicles. And there is some positive directions, but it's so highly contextualized that without having some of these metrics to really judge against, it's, I think we are kind of just hoping, hoping for something to happen here. And I, I don't know that we have a lot of evidence to suggest that that's gonna be positive for us, but that, Mr. Wright, the, the, the forty-seven units that um staff is recommending be offered i- in terms of parking reduction or forty-seven stalls, is that our regular reduction for the CMU zone?
Um, so it's, it's not, the CMU zone uh by itself doesn't have a reduction, so that's just solely based off of what they've proffered uh in their TDM. Um, while they're asking for thirty, we've looked at what their um what their TDM has as far as, you know, where it is located and, and those type of things. We do feel like there could be room for some reduction there, but not a, almost a third of, of the requirement. A lot of the things that uh we see with the TDM is that they do reduce vehicle, you know, trips each day. But they don't necessarily always lead to someone not having a vehicle or two. Um, and so while some of those help maybe get rid of two vehicles in the household, but it's not always a guarantee. And so that's where we have that hesitancy to go with a third reduction, but with that ten percent, that forty
Forty-seven, I think.
Park installs, we felt that that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Um, so, a couple of thoughts, like one is uh that I think the challenge with a lot of these parking conversations we have is the risk asymmetry. And, and um essentially the developer comes in and says like, hey, you know, like this won't, you know, we won't need on-street parking because we had this engineering study. And then, and then in experience, the residents feel that, you know, it increases creates parking problems for themselves. I think it'd be really awesome if the city had some kind of a program where um the, the sort of parking enforcement could go on to the developers so that it was a little bit of um risk pushed back onto that side, like for example, so they get up to a certain amount of parking they provided. And then if they, they just can't rent to people with cars after that point, it'd be really awesome if the city had a program like that. But that's an aside. I know we're talking about this case. I think in general though, I think affordable housing is um something that, you know, I, I loved hearing the students' experience. It's very challenging for young uh married couples to find housing uh in our community and that's a big moral issue in our community. I did the math and uh the delta of eighty-seven stalls, which is the difference between what the developer's asking for and what the city is saying, is about three million dollars, which comes to around ten thousand dollars per unit. If you kind of amortize that over a ten-year period, that's about an extra hundred dollars per month. You'd have to charge in rent, which when you're penny pinching on a budget as a married couple, that's really hard. Um, and it might actually be more than that. If you take his thirty-five thousand dollar figure per stall, which I was finding more like twenty-five thousand, but that's more a national average. So, I mean, it's a lot of money we're talking, you know, at state and that has to get passed on to the, to the um, to the renters and that sucks. I really think that sucks. The other question, the other uh thing that I think about is like when we talk about a parking problem, what does that actually mean? It means that the existing residents probably can't find the parking they're used to. So there's just an incumbency bias, I think, for lots of people here, which is unfortunate again, because there's new families that wanna get started in our community and we're just making it harder for them. So I agree with what Mr. Pepperoni is saying, that maybe this is kind of beyond the scope of just this particular issue, but I'm also very sympathetic to the arguments made by BikeWalk Provo and other young people who are just saying, hey, I really wanna be able to live in the city and it's incredibly expensive and all these parking requirements just make it that much more expensive.
I wanted to say, I, I did look over the um Joaquin general, um, Joaquin neighborhood plan and um it's interesting that these issues of having, we wanna, it says. improve pedestrian friendly friendly aspects of the neighborhood, improve on-street parking, reducing pressures and conflicts that result from those. And those, to me, are really contradictory. And I think that's kind of the problem here is that there's this idea of preserving, like, making life more livable in the neighborhood. But also, there's the pressure of parking and you can't do both. You can either have parking and therefore lots of cars in the neighborhood or you can you know, try to move toward a a less, like a more walkable situation. And it is expensive to subsidize or charge, either subsidize the land for the cars, for the parking or pass it on to renters. And so there's cost involved in that.
I like the idea, the concept and the location. I never, I've lived here all my life, never knew there was a fifty east. I've driven by it a million times to go to get pizza, but I really never knew there was a fifty east. But as I drove through there, both times I went to look at it, that fifty east was just jammed. You couldn't get through it. You had to stop and wait, stop and wait, stop and wait. This plan makes me nervous. I would be nervous giving them a ten percent reduction on the parking. But to get a twenty nine percent reduction is just beyond what I think our city should do.
Okay, I love this project. I have had kids at BYU, married kids, they've had a hard time finding a place to live. If you could guarantee this was going to be married housing, that would be so fantastic because you can convince married people they don't want two cars. They can afford two cars, but they do need a car for the rest of their lives, other things that happen besides on campus. They they have to go other places that even transportation, public transportation can't take them. It's that last several miles that are the problem. And we have winters that are harsh and it's just the reality of where we live. I mean, I'm a city girl. I love the city. I was born in New York City. I I I lived without a car. I know how to do this and I love it. But this is not that. And because we have so much open spaces and and things that we have to do and go to are so far away, people have cars. And I don't think we're ever going to change that. I think we can ask them to get down to one car, but to get down to to no cars is really difficult for for most people. And so you have to account for that. And all we're doing is creating problems. And I agree, this has to be something that's thought in a bigger scale, not piecemealed. If we're going to try and change things, but I just wish there was a way to make sure this was going to be married housing because then the amount that they're asking for actually fits. But I just don't think we can assure that. And I don't know, maybe could you make all of them studios so that because people, you know, singles aren't going to want to share a studio as much as married people. I don't know. And then it'd be more affordable, like my kids could not afford sixteen hundred dollars a month rent. They could afford barely twelve hundred, actually. So fourteen hundred is going to be a stretch. But if you had, maybe you could get more units that way and and cover your costs for the extra parking that way. I don't know. Or maybe if you had single more studios or only studios, then maybe it would be easier to get a a bigger reduction. I don't know. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I I sure wish that we could make this work because I think it's a really great project, but those are my concerns.
There's been a lot of ideas thrown out by the commission to try. This is not, is this legislative? No, it's not. So, I mean, there's been a lot of ideas thrown out by this commission in ways that we could potentially approve this plan or would be more likely to if I, I don't know how the wind is blowing, but it kind of feels like, I mean, I would vote for this, honestly. I'm planning on it. I think we need housing despite parking concerns and despite the point that I do agree with Mr. Pepperoni on. But I got to stick to that principle. But it does seem like it's probably going to blowing the other way. So I wonder, is there a way to for us to like, give the developer more feedback and continue this? Or I don't know.
I'll I'll share a few thoughts now and I think we all like this project. And there's 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 push factors and pull factors that make it a little bit more, not just straightforward, like, oh, we're going to approve. One, it's in the right location. That's this is where we want CMU, right? Close to campus. This is where we would give reductions because of campus proximity. I love the amenities that you've provided. And that's going to be an attractive place for a lot of people. While I don't find them particularly affordable, I think, you know, there's a market that will and they'll love it. They'll invite their friends over. And and you know, I I think the way I my approach to the parking when it is that I, for me, it's it becomes a little bit of a public safety issue. Because I look at when there's cars parked on the side of the street or this is in my mind, when you have cars pulling in and out and cars driving down and and you have collisions or you have some little kid popping out or somebody, a pedestrian popping out. And we've had, you know, Provo City has had pedestrian deaths with automobile pedestrian deaths as recently as like a like three in the last year or two. I I think we're, we'd all be inclined to approve approve of this, but I think it's it's a question of like, do we stick with a a staff recommended parking reduction? The applicant recommended reduction? Or maybe something in between? I I don't find the report by Hell's Engineering particularly persuasive. I don't find that it's very robust. I think it it provides some some assumptions, but I don't, I don't in reading over it, I I think it has some assumptions that don't feel quite modeled out. When I look at like a worst case scenario, if we if we go with the, you know, give the applicant all the the parking that he's requested, we do have cars going elsewhere to find spots, right? In in a worst case scenario. And and I don't like, I don't think we want that. As as me, as a a member of the planning commission, that's not what I would feel comfortable doing. On the other hand, if it's overparked, if there's extra parking and we only do a ten percent reduction and you you have extra spaces that are unused. I think there's still a way to to make money off those spots. If if the demand is there and you can sell those extra spots at a premium, which I suspect you can with parking that close to campus. It it might subsidize some of the costs of other parking stalls. Those are kind of my thoughts on the project. I I I do, I do love the scale of it. I I did have a kind of a question to to planning staff is if if they wanted to still meet their partner requirements and needed to go over seventy four feet, building height, to to meet another level of parking or or something like that, is that? I want to get staff's thoughts on that.
Yes, that would be over the height permitted in the zone. So they would have to look at getting a variance potentially to to do something like that. Or amend the CMU zone to allow for greater height.
That's kind of what I thought. Go ahead, Commissioner Kendall.
I just think we should consider a motion. We all, because basically we have to approve or not. And I think it would be nice to let some of these now things, new information or feedback, go back to the applicant. Let them rethink things and maybe come back so that we can, knowing that this is the, this is the hinge point. And so I would, I would like to continue it. And that way they have the opportunity to come back and see if they can make it work in some way, whether that's asking to increase the height, whether that's coming up with smaller units. But let them figure out how to make this work, knowing that it it looks like we don't feel comfortable with that sort of a reduction in the parking.
Yeah, I totally agree. And and what I was kind of saying with my earlier comment is, like, if we could potentially give some feedback around, like, what are types of number? Because I think it's up to us to render a decision on the TDM, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so just kind of like some feedback to the applicant around what we'd be willing to do, I think would be then helpful for him to potentially go back and adjust some of these variables.
To to that, could we ask staff to help us get some data on the number of vehicle slots for the per-bed density for that area?
Yeah, I I I do think, I do feel if we are going to, if there's leaning towards continuing that we ask staff specifically or the applicant specifically for additional information, a deliverable. I'm also very open to hearing a motion on if someone wants to put a motion to like a yes, no vote on on applicant's proposal or staff's proposal. I'm, I think it it might be helpful to hear a vote on that, too. But I'm
Just procedurally, what happens if we say no? Does it like kick a new process for staff? Or I I'm just curious what's easier for both applicant and for city staff?
I'm not sure what you mean by if you say no, if you say no to any parking reduction.
If we were to, if we were to make a motion to basically approve this project with the staff's recommendation, which is effectively saying no to the applicant's request.
Right.
Is, and the applicant says, well, I can't do the project with this, you know, with this, what was approved because it no longer pencils on my end or whatever.
Right.
Would the applicant then have to go back through an application process? I guess I'm just saying, like, is if we're trying to meet in the middle somewhere here and problems solved together, is it better to grant a continuance with some feedback? Or to deny it or to approve it per the city's recommendation and then have that thing go back through and reapply? Just a person like a process question.
I don't think you'd have to reapply. I think he could amend the application and bring that back to you. So you'd be approving the project plan, but you'd be approving it subject only X percent parking reduction, right? And then you're saying, what if the developer wants to come back with something that deviates from that? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, because there's a there's a difference between staff saying the ten percent, he wants more. And I'm guessing according to what he said earlier, he's saying, hey, if you don't give me this, it's probably not going to pencil out on my end. So my guess is he's probably, yeah, my guess is he probably would come back and re-ask with a different concept plan or something like that, based on the feedback you're doing. So I'm just procedurally, is it easier for us to continue it with some feedback? Potentially have him update some of the things and plans based on that feedback or for us to just move forward on the motion as it is with the ten percent reduction?
Well, I think continuing it is fine if, like the chairman said, you have specific deliverable deliverables you're looking for that either developer or the staff can bring you. I think it would be helpful, maybe there's just a straw poll on where you're leaning on the percentage because I'm not sure this makes sense to continue if the majority of the camp planning commission is not happy we got going over ten percent. So I think having some more information from you might be helpful.
We haven't done it before, but I I wanted to use a straw poll before just because I can't read your minds on which way the wind's blowing. Yeah, does anyone want to put forward a a little straw poll?
So I I can see what you're saying and I think that would be reasonable because if the applicant has some other ideas of ways to make it work financially, that they could just bring that back with some modifications. So I would be inclined to vote to approve it with the ten percent reduction.
So ten percent from Commissioner Kendall, I
The city's recommended ten percent.
The city recommend, I lean towards city recommended ten percent approval approving with the ten percent reduction per staff's recommendation. Commissioner Knutson says.
I would want to see a higher reduction potentially with some of the ideas that were were floated during this conversation, considered by applicant, potentially a higher percentage of studio apartments or potentially some, a little bit of commercial.
Commissioner South, Commissioner De Soto, which, where are you?
Kind of with Commissioner Whitlock.
So I I think I could go to the ten percent. I have confidence in staff's numbers. I have some hesitancy about any reduction if we're not doing that for other projects that are very similar. Temp Towers and the Brickyard, like, we have those standards, they're in the same general location. Why why are we doing it here and not there? At the same time, I mean, this is a, it's a large project, it's a great project, would provide a lot of a great opportunity. So I think to go anywhere beyond that, I think we would have to see some innovation. Some of the ideas in the TDM, I think, are good if we made them scale to the size of the project or maybe some of the other innovations. And certainly, this this idea of density, like what, I'm not sure we even know what our that neighborhood is. And, you know, I agree a little bit with Commissioner Whitlock's idea of this incumbency bias. Like, I'm okay to change that. Let's find out what it is, though. We don't have a baseline, so.
Okay, applicant, you have enough votes to to have this be approved with a ten percent reduction. Yeah, why don't you come up? We can negotiate.
Well, thank you, by the way. That's that's good. So I just wanted to address a couple of things just real quick, just to clarify. I think it might be helpful and then we can discuss what you you recommend. I I luckily, I talked to the managers of the Temp Towers today and I know, of course, Bill, you you know, the parking, all all the situation there and they did get it approved, I think, with one point five one. So they have a hundred and eighty-two parking stalls, they have a hundred and twenty units. They've sold one hundred and forty-four parking permits. So every night, right now, thirty-eight stalls are unused and have been unused since the project started. That's what they told me today from the from Temp Towers. So that just reiterates what happens when you charge for parking. They are essentially utilizing a one-point-two ratio. And that is very, that is the closest comp to our project in terms of like married housing. So that gives you an idea, they're actually using one point two, but they do charge for it. But, you know, consider that.
And do they know how many cars are actually held by the by those renters? And where the additional parking is going?
I did ask him, I said, well, do you have an on-street problem because of that? And they said, no, because there's really no on-street parking around there, like just up the up the street, I guess, or wherever it is. So and they're not being used. So I I mean, that's that's what Temp Towers told me today when I when I asked about it. Because I I do view as the closest kind of comp, even though it's further from campus and we are, obviously, it's by the on the other side of the city. Yeah, they're charging forty dollars a month. So, I mean, it goes back to the, you know, if you if you charge for it like that, then, you know, they'll like maybe not not to do that or just because we were talking about it. Then I just, I I, when I said nothing has been built there in terms of this CMU, I know the Brickyard is approved, but I will predict now they will not be building it. In fact, I know they have problems already with, you know, financing the project because of of the parking. I mean, that's the reality. So we'll see. I mean, hopefully they do. I I would hope someone does build, but nothing actually has been built. They have building permits, I think, but, you know, we'll see if they can afford to do it. I'm just point that I don't know, I don't know them, I don't know what they're doing, but it hasn't been done. And then Jeff, you made a comment, you know, on the parking, the the cost of the parking isn't just the parking. It was a good calculation you did, but what you swap is the actual unit. So you actually have to think about the units you're removing and that's totally different, right? You're you're basically, you've got to pull that out. So it's, it's not just that you're adding more parking. It's like literally, we can't go higher. And that's why someone may be asked about that, can we go higher? Because if we could, and and maybe it starts offsetting, but you what you're doing is you're essentially swapping thirty-five thousand dollar parking spots for a unit that's maybe worth two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. So it's not
A lot more than three million.
Yeah, it's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
And that's the same with a grocery store, putting a grocery store takes away from
But I'm certainly put on my list to look at. I I don't, I'm curious now because I'm like, did I miss something? You know, it's it's better to have a grocery store there or something, you know?
So I think I think this is kind of what Commissioner Zolos was saying, like, do you you do you want us to approve it at the city's recommendation or do you continue? Like, I guess that's what your question was, right?
Yeah, I mean, Yeah, I mean, you have enough votes to get approval and move forward on your project with a 10% reduction.
To be honest, I'm, you know, this is like my first time up here having this conversation. So I'm like you, I don't know what the right thing to do is if you approve it, then can we come back? I mean, we're obviously have to make modifications because like serious modifications to, I, I don't even know how we put more parking in there. Um, so uh, I don't know if that's the right thing to do. I certainly don't want to reapply. I want to keep this going, so continue.
If I were you, I probably would like a continuance with very specific feedback from us. That's probably to see. And then we also have, Commissioner South has some questions that I think are very valid and are specific deliverable. Does that not make sense?
No, I, I, well, I'm not gonna, I'll just say, first, first person to put forward a motion gets it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
I only have one more thing left real quick. Um, so um, Commissioner South, you, you talked about EV cars, maybe we don't have enough. And so the ratios we got were from them, they do this professionally and they said typically you want to have one car per 100 um residents. I don't know if that's for people though, I'll check because if it was, then maybe we need to have six or seven of the cars. Frankly, we could have 20 cars there or 30 because we don't actually pay, it's, it's really um, the extra usage that people pay for, which is far cheaper. It works out to about, um, I wish, I should have put up this whole slide, but they've been doing this for a while. This is all, you know, it's $12 up to 20 or 30 per hour. It's way cheaper than owning your own car. And there, and it's been successful, but I need to look at that because if it is six or 10, like we could put them in there because um, I, I do think people are going to use them, especially when it's affordable. Now we're using their app, they're doing Uber and all the other stuff anyway. So it's like click the button. Oh yeah, just go take the, you know, the, the bolt down in the garage. Uh, they will use them. Um, but I, you know, I, I need to double check to see if, make sure maybe we, maybe we need more, but certainly don't have a problem putting more in there because that's a, that's a great trade-off. But I mean, that, that'd be one thing I would research and come back and say, yeah, okay, we need, we need more of those because you maybe said we didn't have enough. But there's no resistance for me to have more. If they're being utilized, we'd have 20 or 30, you know, it's not, not, that'd be fantastic.
Um, this isn't for you. I just was gonna say, if we continue then, and we give some other suggestions, do we have intentions to then vary from the city's 10%? That, that's the question. Because if we're gonna land in the same place anyway, then we ought to just approve it with the city's 10% and then allow the applicant to figure out how to make that work.
I, I'm, I'm a little, like, my vote would be, I'd be less inclined to um, uh, I, again, I, I like, I don't find the engineers' TDM report persuasive or very robust in terms of its model. Uh, and uh, you know, the, the risk of it being, you know, parking just spilling out all over the place is greater. It's a greater risk to me than it would be for uh extra parking being available. Cause I imagine uh, you know, if there's extra parking, there's I, I see this place as a destination where a lot of friends and neighbors or student colleagues will want to come and hang out with their, with their friends. And, and there's gonna be a need for, for parking there. Um, the, the risk of uh three singles being in a unit. Um, you know, it might be small, he might have a marketing plan that targets somehow to, to married people, but there's a risk there. And so like, I'm, I, I'm not inclined to deviate if we continue, but I, I'd love to hear uh those who are sitting on the fence about continuing, I'd love to hear uh their thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think I've more or less said my position, but I, I, I'm, I, I imagine if I were to summarize um, if there was a higher proportion of studio apartments, potentially um, commercial, which would take away the number of units. So therefore reduce the total number of required parking spaces. Um, if there was potentially more ride sharing and then based on the data that Andrew South is looking for, if potentially it were to uh back up the report from Hill Engineering, my guess is there would be some people um, on this commission that would be willing to grant a higher variance. But maybe that's not accurate.
That's, that's my position as well, especially if with this additional information, maybe really doubling down on some of the innovations here. And staff can get persuaded that, yeah, there's a better, there's, there's more latitude here. Then that can make me, you know, that would make me more comfortable as well.
And maybe it's not the full variance, but something, you know, in between. So I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead, please, please.
My wife's in the back with our brand newborn. Um, so uh, I'd like to make a motion that we uh, continue um, item four. Um, Morgan Lynch requests project plan approval for a new 306 unit apartment building in the CMU Campus Mix Use Zone located at 8870 North 50 East Joaquin Neighborhood uh with um, the following feedback from the commission that potentially um, the applicant looks into alternative concept plans with potentially higher percentage of uh, studio apartments, commercial and/or innovations of ride sharing and other such things to address the primary concern of the commission, which is the, the delta and your requested variance and what the city is recommending. We also are asking city staff to um, do a bit of research and provide us with information on the current uh car to resident density. Did I say that right?
Sure. Parking space to bed density, I think is, maybe there's a better term for it.
Any discussion on the motion? Anything he missed that you want to include as part of that continuance?
Andrew, how will that information sway your decision?
Trying to understand what, what does the Joaquin neighborhood look like currently? And what are we be, what are we proposing? And what is that distance? Like how far out are we? Maybe it's less than we think, maybe it's more than we think, but we don't have that, we just don't have a baseline. I, I don't even know how to conceptualize that.
So what, what's happening already would impact how you feel this should go? I mean, I guess I don't see how it changes.
So like uh, some of the public comments that came up um, from property management folks, for example, saying, hey, we see this all the time. Well, when we see this, what does that look like? What is that density right now? And is this in line with that? Are we going to see more than that? How does that change that, that dynamic that makes sense?
Yeah, I just feel like this is such a large project. It's, it's an entity in itself. It's gonna create its own problem.
Yep, that's true.
So have a problem or not, you're gonna create one. If you didn't have one, you have one now. And if you have one, you, you got a worse one. So to me, I'm not sure how that information is gonna change how this looks.
But what's the gravity of that change? How large is that? I, I just.
I, I'm gonna add this amendment to, to your motion that uh, that parking staff come back with a, a report. Uh, I, I won't, I'd like to see the number of parking tickets uh within a two block, two blocks in each direction, maybe three blocks south to university on, on the west. So the university boundary is on the east. But look, is there a, is there a second on the motion? For a continuance with those amendments?
By the way, how does the continuance work? I mean, do we come back and when do we come back?
Yeah, you would come back to the next uh, next planning commission meeting in uh,
August 9th.
August 9th.
Unless they needed more time, right?
Unless, unless.
We can say that.
I assume we'd work pretty fast.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, uh, the motion, as stated, we'll go ahead and do a roll call on that motion for a continuance uh, subject to those amendments. Uh, Sandy, you had. You do?
She already has.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm uh, let's hear it now. Yeah. Yeah, um, if you could step aside and, and just let her uh speak it into the, to the microphone. Thank you, Sandy.
Oh, so we have um, I have them all broke down by each block, or I have them broke down between 500 North and 900 North from January 1st to June 30th.
Let's do that.
I recommend that this can be shared in writing with the planning commission. It's a more efficient way for us to adjust the information while motion's on the table.
Um, I, I agree. Uh, we'll, we'll discuss it later um, via email.
Put it in writing.
Um, but we'll, but yeah, yeah, he's uh, Vice Chairman Whitlock is correct. There is a motion on the table. I do need to have a vote on it. Uh, procedurally. So let's start with uh Commissioner DeSoto.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Uh, item number four. Uh, Morgan Lynch requests project plan approval for a new 306 unit apartment building in the CMU Zone located at 870 North 50 East Joaquin Neighborhood. Uh, there's been a motion to continue. All, it was unanimous vote to continue the motion, the, the item to the next planning commission meeting on August 9th. Six, yeah, 6-0. And with that, the, tonight's planning commission meeting is concluded. Um, if you have any questions, please talk with planning staff. And then we'll have a, a motion to adjourn. Does anyone want to put that motion forward?
I'll motion to adjourn. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.